For the prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to each of you. Let's bow in prayer, please. Father God, we come before you this morning to say thank you for your grace and your mercy and your loving kindness toward us. We thank you, Lord God, for this day in October. And we thank you, Lord God, for the coolness of the morning. And we're mindful, Lord God, of the changes of seasons and all that we have to look forward to during this time of the year. And we also reminded, Lord God, as the seasons change, is we serve a God that never changes. You're the same today, yesterday, and forever, and for that, we're thankful. We also are mindful of the wars that are raging, raging all over this world. And we know that, Lord God, at your command, that things can be still. At the sound of your voice, Lord God, we know that you can make the wind and the waves behave. So we ask, Lord God, that you would just call for peace all over this earth this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Good morning. We'll hear today from Assistant Chief Deputy Wesley Richardson with the Sheriff's Office, Chief Administrator Michael Burdell with the DA's office, Personnel Director Carmen Douglas, Chief Prostration Officer Ray Williams with the Juvenile Court, Vice President of Development Becky Saunders with Liberty Learning Foundation, and Pastor Richard Williams with the Beacon Center. Items to be considered during our formal meeting include a cooperative agreement for state homeland security grant for the Sheriff's Office, cooperative agreement for state homeland security, a second one for the Sheriff's Office, Amendment Number One to a contract with Chappie's Deli for annual employee luncheon, consider property casual workman's comp insurance renewal, consider a MOU with the Administrative Office of the Courts to fund the court referee salary, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions?
Florence, I added Maine, right? Is that on there?
Let me make sure.
Montgomery area non-equestrian.
No, it's not, but it is now.
Okay, yeah. The five thousand we talked about.
Right.
Does anybody else want to participate? Maine has their big fundraiser coming up on Thursday night, the equestrian program, if anybody else wants to participate, it's a really good program that works on a shoestring budget. They put all the money back into helping our special needs kids do therapeutic horse riding, so. And then Hope Inspired Ministry, Rhonda, I'm gonna get you to it.
We received a request from Hope Inspired Ministry. I know that Dan has been out there to speak. Isaiah, have you spoken to them as a group?
Not as a group.
So I encourage you to, John Bowman, who is the Executive Director of that organization, is here and has made a request of the Commission. I don't have it in front of me. What's the number?
John, what was it again? Ten thousand, that's what I thought.
This, what Hope Inspired Ministry does, and John, I'm happy to let you introduce. Would you please come to the, introduce yourself? This is an organization that helps. I'm gonna let him explain it. They're doing real work in making, they're putting people to work and giving them encouragement and a future and a hope, so please explain what you do.
Well, I typically, we're workforce development with a heavy dose of social work. So I retired from the police department, as many of you know, but we use them for guys and girls that would frequently come through incarceration. Oftentimes, we may say, why don't you just get a job? But there was real-life barriers in their life, from residency to identification, to medical needs, to transportation. And we teach them workforce skills, but we also eliminate all of those barriers that come to their life. And then, you know, in the end, we want them to become self-sufficient, and when they graduate, they are working. So we teach them life skills, soft skills, work skills through a six-week program, and then place them on a job at the conclusion of that. But, you know, part of it is recruiting as well. We go to the prisons to recruit. We go out in the streets to recruit, to include the areas frequented by the homeless, to try to talk them into wanting better in their lives, so.
And they, the six-week program that you referenced, they come every day for six weeks? How often do they come for six weeks?
They do. They come, it's patterned, just like a job, to get them in the habit of coming to class each and every day. It's from nine to four. We provide them transportation.
And a meal.
And a meal. That's kind of how we keep them coming back. And then, we do have guest speakers to come in, and I think Mr. Sankey's on the list to come, or will be.
Good, and get Commissioner Moore Ziegler on there as well. It's an impactful program, and they, you know, you can also donate nice professional clothes in good condition, because these folks are gonna go to work. Now, some are gonna go to work in jeans and boots, and some are gonna go to work in more professional clothes. But they make sure that every graduate has a place to work immediately after they finish the program. It's making a huge impact. I've been a supporter just about my whole time on the Commission, but John Bowman is a real rock star, and we're real fortunate to have him in Montgomery doing what he's doing, so.
We serve him. He's a rock star.
Him, right, right. And John realizes that all power on heaven and earth is God, not him.
And I will add, we do have a, not just the Montgomery campus, but one at the Mount Megs Department of the U.S. Service. I saw the sheriff come in. I know he's coming to speak in the coming weeks there, and so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I did, I did speak with this group. There are groups, nonprofits that are out there that we fund and do the job, and we don't really know the results of their effort. But this is one program that really actually works. You know, I mean, I've seen it in action. Some of the stories that some of the participants will have to tell you will bring tears to your eyes, joy to your heart, every possible emotion that a human being can feel, you can get from one of these people who has successfully completed this program. And I contribute or attribute the success of that program to the dedication of that man, John Bowman. I know he does it all through Christ, but he does it well. He's dedicated. Even as a police officer, I first met him in Leadership Montgomery, I think is where we met, John.
Best class ever, thirty?
Best class ever. It was triple X, though. But, and that was our numbers, and we were great. And John, the success of that program, believe me, it's you, it's you. And I'm happy to support it, and I hope this Commission will come up with the $10,000 to help you. I'm saddened, and unfortunately, I won't be able to attend the event, which is, when is it?
Yeah, it's next Thursday.
October twenty-sixth, next Thursday night. I know Mr. Sankey's wife's coming, and we do.
There's a story to be told. I had, John gave me a preview of a story to be told at that meeting. I wish I could be there to hear it. You guys are gonna really, really feel that one, so I hope we.
So, Mr. Chairman, it looks like in our joint, we're a little shy.
Yeah, we haven't got to the joint part yet, but we will. You're still on agency, right? Okay. Yeah, let's get through our agencies, and then we'll do education, and then we'll bring it up again.
Excuse me, John. What type of skill sets are you all providing? What type of training are you actually providing and so forth for the people that come through your program?
Right. So we focus on life skills and soft skills. We don't focus on hard skills, like welding, or CDL, or nursing. The employers that we've talked to said that it's those skills that they lack. I met with Jay Industry the other day, and he said, John, I just need someone that has the ability to show up and the willingness to work and communicate with those around them. But once they graduate, our core values are faith, family, passion, and excellence. But the family piece, they become part of our family. So after they graduate, we work with them to put them on a pathway to a career. So our step is to get them a job, and they do it well, and then B, the better job comes along, and then C, that career job. We've had some to go into the nursing field to get their CNA, to put them on that pathway to get there. We've had some to come out that we work with to help get their CDL permit. And then we place them at a job where they can continue that move forward till they get their CDL as well. But we focus on the life and soft skills. We actually teach a program that the state community colleges teach called Ready to Work. They've since changed the name to ACE Alabama Career Essentials. But most all of them, when they graduate, receive that certificate as well, which is three college credit hours for going through and receiving that.
And not just the class, but they connect each student with a mentor. So like, once, I was connected with one of the women who was going through the six-week program, and once a week, she and I would meet together and have lunch and just talk about her life and the world, and however, you know, help she needed, or just to chat. So there are lots of opportunities to volunteer, to make an impact in the community, not just donating clothes, but donating your time to help them. Or if you own a business, or an employer, these folks need good job opportunities for when they get out.
Yes.
It does what it says. It inspires hope.
It does.
Hope, hope is what these people were lacking.
And many of the individuals out there, they're not, they're not working because they have lost hope. They've lost their purpose, they've lost their guidance.
That program puts it within their reach.
What's your annual operating budget?
We have, it's a little over $2 million, and we have eight different campuses throughout the state. So we originated in starting in Montgomery, and then expanded to Birmingham, so we have a campus in Birmingham as well. And then, we have three campuses in Lyles County, one that serves the entire county. It also goes, we go and pick up in Selma. And then we have two campuses inside the high schools there. And then we have locations in Bessemer and Coleman, Alabama, at an addiction recovery program that we teach their participants at.
Yeah, this program's a real deal. John, you're a real deal too, man.
It is.
And you need, I know I had the opportunity to come share about a month ago, but you need people to come in and share.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I know I talked to Mr. Sankey at the last prayer walk, even to, you know, we address and teach health care classes for him to even mention that, because health is a huge issue for our students as well. But, you know, I know Mr. Harris came and spoke some from the legal, legal aspect, which always draws questions.
But let me encourage you before you leave today, this room, there's some other people sat sitting there that's up here, out there, that would be very good to come in and share, but thank you, John.
Yes, sir. And I'll be around after the meeting to talk to.
Thank you. We'll come back to that, Florence, because that's more into the, I think, in the joint revenue.
Are there any additions to miscellaneous? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
I have one, Florence.
Yes, ma'am.
A thousand dollars to Sydney Lanier Band.
Florence, you have one on there for me, too, for track uniforms, for the.
That was on the last one, I think, Dan.
No, I'm looking at it. It's on here.
Yeah.
Rubek Boutique.
It's on there, this one. I think I saw that one. It's on.
Yeah, I want, I want, I'm a dollar, a hundred dollars off, forty-one hundred. I have four thousand.
Thank you for doing that one.
Oh, yeah.
Wait, wait, what?
Forty-one hundred. It's four thousand. It should be forty-one.
Okay.
Somebody's gonna call you from Park Cross.
Oh, I know. I'm ready. And you're getting one from Lanier, too, so get ready for that one.
I just gave to Lanier. I got the call this morning about Lanier.
I did, yeah, I did, too.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Florence, this is one that I would, my recommendation is that we do five thousand from the joint for Hope Inspired Ministries, and I'll do additional thousand from mine.
We, at this point, we do not have five thousand in our joint.
Oh, this is eight, nine. This is nine. But that was from before last meeting.
That's for, that's eighty-nine hundred for today's meeting.
Where are you seeing?
Our green sheet that was on our, at our desk says eighty-nine hundred.
Is there something on there for this meeting that is not taken off that year, because they haven't approved, probably? Yeah, we should, we should.
That was.
Tammy has her hand raised.
From the last.
Tammy, Tammy has her hand raised. Tammy?
Do we have eighty-nine hundred left, or?
Oh, that's right, that's right.
The what was that?
The little free libraries.
Oh, the little, okay, so how much do we have left in?
What?
How much? Twenty-four fifty-seven left in the joint. So.
We can do two fifty apiece, twenty-five hundred apiece from.
Oh, we could.
I can do whatever I need to do to get it up to.
Yeah, let's, let's do the twenty-four fifty-seven from the joint.
And then somebody's gonna have to do math.
Well, we can, we might be able to. And then.
We can do two thousand.
Two thousand apiece. I'm good with doing, I'm good with doing two thousand from my joint.
I'll do two thousand from my, I want two thousand from my agency, though.
Can we do, I know Teresa likes to do them all from one, but.
That only says to about eighty-five.
All right, well, let's go back and do two thousand from our agency, and then Rhonda wants to do two thousand from her agency. Commissioner Harris, you want to do from agency or from the?
Just be backing up. Two thousand from agency.
Okay.
One thousand for me, Florence, from agency.
We're at ninety-five.
But we.
That's, I'll do a thousand from agency.
All right.
So he's over ten.
That gets you over the, over the line, John. We appreciate you very much.
Yeah, I mean, that's a.
We don't all agree on everything.
Commissioner Sankey had his hand up for a minute.
Well, no, I was just waiting for that discussion to be complete. I want to go back, Florence, to agency and give one thousand to the North Pass Neighborhood Association, please.
If I don't call William Boyd up here now, he's gonna get on me.
I was about to say, we gotta do.
Tear me up.
I'm trying to figure out how we gonna do the parade before I take, put mine in.
I done brought John up here. If I don't give you, you've been on call me all day, so.
Oh, he gonna call you. He gonna, I'll let you know.
No, John is a good guy, though, but I just want to say this, and I got Deion here because she's taking over the parade. But last year, we was like five thousand dollars short, and J.C., probate judge, J.C. Love stepped in and did what he needed to do. So whatever y'all gave last year, it was somewhat like borderline, but we appreciated every nickel and every dime was spent.
What kind of request is this?
Sir?
What kind of request are you about to make here?
The New Year, the New Year's Day Parade.
Well, you started off by thanking us for what we did last year, not criticizing it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do that, please.
And I, we had a big award out there for you.
Yeah, but I'm earning, I'm earning that award right now.
Yes, sir.
Keeping you straight.
Yes, sir. I understand.
So, so please, please appreciate what we've done, if you're gonna ask us to do something new.
We thank you all for nineteen years of support. Nineteen years ago, Reed Ingram, Jai Williams, and Elton D was the only resource from this parade. They the one really started this parade, and we thank them in their absence. Now, nineteen years ago, they're on the parade in the state of Alabama, and because of Montgomery County Commissioners. And we here today as we celebrate this nineteen years of good standing in the community, something that is well-needed. And Duck Singleton and Isaiah Sankey and Ms. Ziegler have been a part of it. They'd have been out there, saw the crowd, the smiles on people's faces. And I thank you, Commissioner Dan, you never showed up, but we do have a plaque for you. But what you gave last year was outstanding. You stepped up to the plate.
You keep talking, you're gonna talk yourself out of this thing. I was, I was in the parade, I was in the parade, and I gave you five thousand dollars. Now, you keep talking.
Good morning, honored commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dee West Stone. Actually, this will be my second year coordinating the Lacy Boy New Year's Day Parade. And first and foremost, I just want to say thank each and every one of you all for your support, because without your support, it takes every dollar, every dime to make it happen. So without your support, we would not have made it to nineteen years. So I'm just introducing myself.
The best thing you did was bring her. This is great.
But first of all, I thank you guys so very much for your support, and I'm just here to introduce myself. I'm the coordinator. Many of you all spoke with me last year. I spoke with you, Mr. Harris, as well as you, Ms. Ziegler, and Mr. Sankey, and Mr. Singleton. And I just thank everybody, and we just want each and every one of you all to come on out. It will be on January the first, that's a Monday of 2024. And we're so happy to have as our honored, our honored.
Grand marshal.
Grand marshal, I'm sorry. Our judge, probate judge, J.C. Love, he will be the grand marshal for the 2024 Lacy Boy New Year's Day Parade. And we just thank you so much for your support, and I'm looking to see each and every one of you all there on Monday, January the first, for the Lacy Boy New Year's Day Parade. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dee. You got my support.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You didn't tell us how much you were asking us for. You might, you need to go ahead and give them the numbers.
Okay. Twenty-five thousand? I'm sorry. Okay, see?
What's the budget? What's the budget for your parade?
To be honest, about twenty-five thousand, because we have to have the security in check and all of that, because we've had no problems at all.
It's gonna take rid of it. Forty-two thousand dollars.
For a parade?
Fifty thousand dollars would be perfect.
Fifty thousand dollars for a parade?
Last year, we did send an invoice. Yes, ma'am, we sent the invoice in last year.
They're asking for more than you.
So absolutely, so it, that's a cost. It's a huge cost, and it's underfunded, but there is a cost. So we were set at forty-two thousand. We did have an invoice that we submitted last year, and we fell short, and J.C. Love stepped in and made it happen. But we asking this commission for twenty thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and Ms. West Stone, and John, too, I do need.
Yes, sir.
A copy of your budget. I think you've sent it to me before. I think William sent me something last year, but I do need updated budget.
No problem. No problem. We will present that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
Just want to thank Mr. Boyd and his family and all his supporters for nineteen years.
Yes.
It's been just great nineteen years, and I enjoy participating. I was hoping that you all would lengthen the parade route, you know, extend it a little bit.
I would love to make that happen.
He probably said he'll make it happen and get a little more money, Sankey, so.
I would love to see that. I really do. So if we can make that happen, that would be so amazing. And of course, this is the only parade in the state of Alabama on New Year's Day, right here in Montgomery, Alabama.
It's on the best side.
That's amazing, yes.
The best side of Montgomery, Alabama. The west side is always the best side.
Yes, but we want to see every one of you all there on New Year's Day, and we're so happy to be a part of this.
We have my support.
Thank you.
Who is Lacy? Lacy Boy. Who is Lacy?
Lacy is my wife's maiden name.
Okay.
Boyd is my name.
I always wanted to hear Lacy Boy.
Yeah, it's all my idea, so we combined two names together.
Oh, okay.
It was a jump, right?
Well, thank you, Ms. West Stone.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much, Commissioner Singleton. Thank you to every one of y'all. Have a blessed day.
Okay, Florence.
Next item that will be considered is a bid award to Donahoo Chevrolet for the Sheriff's Office. Consider budget change request number one for county commission appropriations. Consider travel training requests for community corrections, county commission travel, detention facility, district attorney, engineering, and the Sheriff's Office. Following our formal session, we'll recess to the conference room for meeting, governmental affairs meeting, and then we will have our annual report from the county extension at their offices on Trotman Road.
Florence.
Yes, sir.
Go back to agency. I want to get mine. I put five thousand dollars in for the Lacy Boy Parade. Now, don't disparage me next year when you come down here.
And Florence, on agency, I'll do a thousand again for the Lacy Boy Parade for mine.
We hadn't gotten, I'm the man I'm designated. We hadn't gotten to that yet.
You passed designated.
Maybe that's designated. We certainly did. But you can go back, can't we?
Certainly.
Let me do mine. I did eight. I did eight for him last year on designate. Let me do eight again this year.
So that's eight thousand out of your designated. That's everything. We'll first hear from Assistant Chief Deputy Wesley Richardson.
Congratulations on your promotion. You know, it's been a couple of months now.
Yeah, it's been a few months, but thank you.
You've been here four since that.
That's right, I believe so. Good morning. How are y'all?
Good morning.
Morning.
Is that better? So we're here for the Adeka JAG grant. It's fifty thousand dollars, no match for law enforcement equipment. If approved, we intend to do MDTs, which are mobile data terminals for our PCs in our cars.
So any objection to waiving rules on that?
No objection.
Was it time limit on that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't read, sir.
Why do we need to waive rules?
Sir?
Why do we need to waive rules?
October thirty-first. Let's do about thirty-first.
Thank you.
No objection.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wesley.
Michael Burdell.
You do better than sheriff coming down here. I appreciate you coming and telling the sheriff.
Good morning, commissioners. Just like last time I was before you, I feel compelled to tell you how gorgeous I feel Commissioners Walker and Moore Ziegler are this morning, Commissioner Harris, and Vice Chair Sankey, and Chairman Singleton. You guys are looking quite dashing as well.
What you want, Mike?
Flattery, flattery will get you everywhere.
I resemble that accusation, for sure. Just like the Sheriff's Department, we're pursuing the Adeka Burn Memorial JAG Fund Grant, seeking fifty thousand dollars for equipment, no match. If approved, we would pursue technology for our deputy district attorneys, radios for our investigators, and also some technology for our records division.
Same deadline on the thirty-first?
Yes, sir, and they didn't notify us until it was too late to get on the agenda for two weeks ago.
Any objection to waiving rules?
I have no objection. No objection.
Whatever we can find money for his DA office, we need to.
And we appreciate your generosity, and I have gone on record saying that often, for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Personnel Director Carmen Douglas.
Good morning, commissioners. I am here to ask for a two-step irregular increase for Robbie Estes. He's a senior personnel analyst. He's been with us for over twenty years. I think you all are aware of some of the changes that we've had going on in our department. We've had some people retire that have been with us for over twenty-five years. We had other people who have been with us for over sixteen years resign, and so we've been doing a lot of hiring. One of the employees that left, she was our main point of contact for the Sheriff's Office. She handled all of our testing and promotional exams for the Sheriff's Office. Now Robbie's having to take that over in addition to his other testing requirements. It's really specialized work that they do with the testing, and we actually have a test coming up this Friday with the Sheriff's Office. He's well-qualified, and he's taken on a lot of additional responsibilities, and our budget can cover the request.
Carmen, going forward, will your budget be able to recover? Because you've had some people leave, I guess.
Yes.
So going forward, you'll be okay on your budget?
We will, because the people that had left have been here for so long that when we retire behind them, it's very unlikely that people will be paid at the level that they were paid.
Carmen, is your staff fully back, working in person?
Yes.
So everyone on your staff is, is in the office every day?
Ma'am? No, they're not teleworking.
Good, good. Glad to know that.
How long does this, is Robbie gonna stay? What, a year, or what?
I've asked him if he could stay at least another year beyond where he had planned to retire, and he said that he would. He's been with us for over twenty years. He had, he's actually, he came from the state, so he already has more than enough time in to retire. So we had had the discussions about him retiring. We first had conversations about two years ago, making a plan for, you know, when he would leave. And he was supposed to leave the first. making a plan for, you know, when he would leave. And he was supposed to leave the first quarter of 2024. And that was our plan, but with the changes that have taken place, I really need him to stay longer because of his knowledge and his experience. Robbie has a degree, a master's degree in I.O. psychology and there's really not a lot of people in our area with that type of background. And with the testing that we do, I don't think people understand the requirements that are necessary for the test to be considered valid. And it's both an art and a science to it and it really protects us from, if we're challenged legally, it protects us in the tools that we're using for the testing requirements. We can prove that the content validity is there.
I don't, I don't, I don't question whether or not, you know, he's the best at the job. I just hate to find ourselves in this position where we have an employee that's leaving, nobody to replace him and to keep him, we gotta give him more money.
No, that's not what happened here.
That's what I'm reading.
No, what I feel like is that we should compensate him for the work that he's doing. It's not...
It wasn't stated that way now. You, 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 that may be your reading, but my reading of it, he's ready to retire, but in order to keep him, we gotta give him a raise. That's what I read.
Well, that was not my intent. When I said Robbie...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, but, but I mean, how long will it take? You don't have anybody on staff who can do the job. You say a year, you're gonna be able to find, and you're talking about how difficult it is to get to where he is. Have you identified anybody who can do this job?
I had identified, but unfortunately, because of the climate that we're in right now, it's a little difficult to hire people at his level. But, you know, hiring is a struggle for all departments. But we have hired some people that do not have the level of experience that he has and that's part of what his goal is, is to get these people trained where they can be. And there is also external training that they can go to, to get them up to speed to where they need to be.
Okay, my, but, but my overall point is, I, I, I don't like to see our departments in a position where we have an employee that's leaving and nobody to replace him.
Well, I think if, if, maybe you and I need to have a conversation because we have several areas that are in that, not just ours.
We're talking about this one and I'm making a point and, and that's my point. I don't have a, I have a problem with giving somebody a raise just to keep him.
No, I think you're misunderstanding me. Robbie...
But if you don't give him a raise, will he stay?
He would.
Okay.
He would. But I think it's fair to compensate people for what they do. So that's why I asked to compensate him for his knowledge and his experience and what he brings to the table. I didn't say just to compensate him for him to stay.
You don't have to explain it because if all these things were true, he'd already have the money. You've already been here and asked for it, not when he's getting ready to leave. So let's just move on from it, you know, and see what we're gonna do on it. But we, our department has, this is for them. If you have somebody who's near retirement and they have a complicated job, there should be somebody in line to take that position. That was Chairman Dean, he hopped on that. We have these jobs, we have these people working for us. We should always have a plan of succession, somebody to, especially to keep positions and not have to come to this commission and ask for a raise to keep an employee. Because if that wasn't the reason, he should have had to, if he's worth it, he should have asked for it a long time ago. Others do.
We did have a plan for succession and we did have something in place, but because of the complexities that the Montgomery City County Personnel Board has been in, unfortunately, for job security reasons, certain people do not feel comfortable continuing their employment there because of the uncertainty of their employment because the commission has made us aware that they do not feel the need of the Personnel Board being there anymore. So when we have those complexities in place, and even when I interview people, which we were hopefully bringing on a new person at the end of this month, but I feel compelled to have the conversation with them to let them know that I don't know how long the Personnel Board will be around, that we are doing everything that we can to stay here, but it's hard to get people to leave jobs and come to another job when they're not sure if the employment will be available for them. So I'm doing everything in my power to make sure people know what they're getting into on the front side before they come to work because I think it's only fair. I would want somebody to tell me, do I want the Personnel Board to go away? No. Do I feel like the Personnel Board provides a valuable service to the County Commission? Yes. Have we done a good enough job of making sure y'all understand that? Maybe we haven't, but that's my job. But I think it's only fair to make sure people know what they're getting into. So I had somebody who'd been with us for seventeen years. We had a succession plan in place, but unfortunately, things change and that's the world that we live in. So I have to give, I have to let people come into situations with their eyes wide open and then make their decision. We had a final interview from, with somebody on yesterday. I gave her all the information that I had. She's gonna give me an answer today. She's gonna leave a job that she's had. I hope she makes the decision to come with us, so.
Carmen, is something that's before the city council too?
No, sir.
This is just from us?
Yes, because of the budget.
Anybody got any other questions? We'll put that on the next agenda then.
Thank you.
Make it, Carmen.
Chief Probation Officer Ray Williams.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're here for the agency grant agreement from the Department of Youth Services. They awarded, granted an amount of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars to run our diversion program. And this program of children that would otherwise be sent to the Department of Youth Services and it allows us to treat the children in the community with their families.
Any questions? Be next agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Becky Saunders with Liberty Learning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me back to speak to you on behalf of the Liberty Learning Foundation. I know that most of you have a pretty good idea of what we are doing here in Montgomery County as well as across the state of Alabama. We currently serve forty-nine counties, sixty thousand students. We'll receive our super citizen civics programs that we are putting across the state this year. Here in Montgomery County, and I know Commissioner Moore Ziegler, you have not had the privilege of seeing, attending one of our events and I'm hoping that you will get to do that soon. We will be kicking off the second semester here in Montgomery County on January the eighth, the ninth, and you will get an invitation to that. And I promise if you come, you won't be disappointed. We, we just have already kicked off our first semester of students here in Montgomery. It was incredible. We're working very closely with Dr. Brown and all of the administration at the school. We serve two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five students in Montgomery County schools. That is every second grader who comes through our schools. And we are giving them a civic education program that will teach, inspire, and empower our next great Americans. And I love listening to Mr. Bowman speak about the work they're doing. It's incredible. So what we do is, you know, hopefully these students, one thing that we knew we had to do when we began these programs, we had to start when they are young. If you don't take these students and they, and you start teaching them what it means to hold the most important title, which is citizen, those roles and responsibilities that go along with that title. If we don't teach these things to these students when they are very young and then stay with them all the way through their school careers, and that's exactly what we do. We start them in second grade. We have a third through fifth grade program. We have a middle school program, our seventh graders. And then we have an incredible high school program where we are teaching them everything that they need to know to go out into the workforce, to go to college, whatever it is that they choose to do. We help them make these crucial decisions. We work closely with the schools. But we, our budget this year is one point eight six for Montgomery County. The cost is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And I have been working tirelessly to make that happen here in Montgomery County. We really, really need your help. You've been incredible supporters of ours for the past eight years and we can't tell you how much we appreciate that. We talk about you every time we get together at the Davis Theater, which is an incredible event of its, you know, being there with those second graders and all of their teachers and the administration and our commissioners and our, our senators and our representatives from across the state who show up. We talk about how much you are helping us to bring these programs to these students.
Well, and on that note, Becky, let me jump in. Just like the extracurricular activities aren't funded for MPS sports and band and all that, and we help out with that, this is something else that is not being provided through the traditional curriculum at MPS. So they are filling a gap in learning that, you know, that we got, but that is not necessarily being emphasized today. So they're, they're filling that gap and I've always been happy to help y'all do that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is MPS not helping now at all?
I'm sorry.
Is MPS still not helping y'all fund this at all?
No, they, no, and we don't go to the schools because we, I don't think they have the funding oftentimes to help with something extra.
Actually, they do now. They've got extra funding now. They'll do offer money as part of it and they're funding different programs. So maybe there's opportunity to go back to them.
And speak with them again. We'll be happy to do that. We have spoken with them multiple times throughout our career with, working with MPS. The program's incredible. We're seeing so many great things come out of this program. You know, talking about, you know, hearing heartfelt stories. One of the, the, the community learning projects that we do is the students will nominate and select local heroes within the community to honor. And what they're doing is they're learning that a hero is not just someone who's famous or who makes a lot of money. We have everyday heroes right here in our community, sitting in this room. I dare say, most of the people in this room are community heroes. You're here because you care about your community. You want good things. You want it to be safe. You want it to be thriving. Well, that's what we're teaching these students. As they honor these heroes, it really brings the program full circle. They say, hey, I can be that person. I can be sitting up there one day making decisions that are gonna affect our community in a positive way. So there's so many working parts to this program. If you come and see it, you'll understand a lot more as those of you who've been do understand. We are asking for twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, we really need your help. I know that you supported us with that amount for, I think, two or three years running. And then I know we have been cut back, but this is something that's so important. You know, talking about our heroes, not only does this program affect the students, but also the community members. Up in North Alabama, a group of fifth graders honored a local custodian in their school. And that gentleman, he was just an incredible person. He spoke to the kids. He got to know them. He was so touched by them choosing, selecting him to honor as a hero. He went back to college, got his special education degree and is now teaching in that school system. And he said he never had the courage to do anything like that until these students believed in him.
Yeah, Becky, I'm gonna have to cut you off for a second and I apologize for that. You know, our, it's a great program. We've helped for eight years. We're fully behind the program. I've seen the program. Many of us have seen it. I know it, it makes a difference in the community. It's a different second graders every year. The challenge we have as a commission is there's so many great programs that we're trying not to continuously support to where it gets to kind of be a budget line item for us. It's kind of, we, not just yours, there's many of them. They're unofficial budget line items that we don't put on the budget, but it's every year. So that's kind of our challenge. I know we did ten thousand at the last meeting. We will consider trying to do more and help you going forward, but I, I wanted to make sure I had time for the rest of the commissioners to ask questions.
So we did ten thousand from the joint?
We did ten from joint last meeting, I believe.
Right.
Correct? And so if any commissioners want to do individual, you don't have to do it today, but we will look at doing individuals.
That would be wonderful and we appreciate your support. And if you have any questions, you have my card. You know how to get in touch with me. I'll be happy. I did. I sent everything, yes, sir. And if you have any other questions, just let me know. But we thank you and I promise you, we will continue to work hard in Montgomery to bring these programs. We'll do all the heavy lifting and hopefully we'll be, you know.
Carmen, you got any questions at all?
I know.
Florence, I'll do two thousand from my agency.
Florence, I'll do the same thing from my agency.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Thank you.
Favorite preacher time. Come on.
Well, next here from Richard Williams. While Tammy sets that up for our presentation, you can consider item number five, the Employee Recognition and Appreciation Program under the procedures whereby we can have the annual employee recognition luncheon. You all have to approve the budget for that event.
Any questions about that? What date is it gonna be in November or December?
December.
But you remember what day it's on of the week? Thursday?
It's Thursday, the... I believe it's the seventeenth.
It is fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay.
December fourteenth.
Any questions about that? If not, that'd be next agenda on the employee recognition luncheon. Richard, do you want to start talking a little bit?
Yes, sir. I sure will. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I, I guess from the history, this is my first time. This is the first time that Metropolitan and the Beacon Center has had the pleasure to present. And first, we would like to say thank you for your service and the work that you do to continue to lead every single day. My name is Richard Williams. I serve as the pastor of Metropolitan United Methodist Church. We're approaching a hundred years, our centennial in one more year, and I've had the pleasure of serving as lead pastor there for five years and also the executive director and founder of the Beacon Center. Soon you will see on your screen, you'll see this building that's on thirty ninety-one Gaston Avenue. No problem, I'll talk about it. It'll be on the screen shortly. It was a building that would be a part of the work that you would consider blight. And as I've seen several of the commissioners, as you've done talking and you've been out in the community, we know we cannot stand blight. And so we decided to be a part of that movement before coming to this commission. And we purchased this building in two thousand and twenty-one, completely debt-free for ninety thousand dollars and have done over a half a million dollars worth of renovation. And of that work, seventy-five percent of that work has been completed by companies, organizations, and persons who live on the west side of Montgomery. So when we talk about economic development, we take it to heart at the Beacon Center in all of our work. The Beacon Center, we live by one mission. We exist to remove barriers from our neighbors so they can have a better life. As you've heard from several other organizations that have presented, who are just auspicious and they do amazing work, we're just a part of that train as well. But we do believe that we have our own sauce, right? We have our own sauce that we like to put on some good barbecue. And so we, we identify that as barriers that exist with our neighbors. And so what we do is we have a holistic model. We have over thirty-three different resources that are under one roof, that are under one conjoined roof. Because what we know is, is that as our neighbors are finding themselves in different struggles, we know that it's hard for them to go to place, to place, to place, to place. And half the time, when that does happen, there's something called a COC, a continuum of care, that breaks down. In my undergrad, my minor was in I.O. psychology, and one thing that we would know in that process is, is that there's some behaviors that have to be put in place for individuals to not only pull themselves up with their bootstraps, but sometimes individuals don't have bootstraps to pull themselves up by, and so we have to do that work as well. There's an exhaustive list of resources that are there and we do a host of different things from providing people access to STD and SDI testing. One of the reasons that we brought that to site was, is that you may not know, the highest STD rate for our area is not teenagers, is not those in their twenties and thirties, it's actually those who are fifty-five and above. And then at sixty, that rate of STDs and SDI increases substantially. And I know Commissioner Sankey, with your work in healthcare, you've seen it, you've heard the story over and over again. But what we found was, is that those who were caregivers, those who were taking over for grandparents, that they were having other activities, right? And that was breaking up marriages. It was breaking... And that was breaking up marriages, it was breaking up homes, it was calling nine-one-one calls. And we said, "Who's gonna do that work?" And so we got with a partner to do that work. We're also with Trenton State Community College, um, providing that ready-to-work service and pathways. Um, but also for ASVAB, we have individuals who are graduating from our high schools right here in Montgomery, and when they go to prepare to go into military, they are not making the score. So we thought it was necessary to bring that program in-house. And then also, we found that individuals were struggling doing GED and high school diploma completion work, and we had to get to the root of and to find that barrier. And we found individuals could not read. So we brought a literacy program into the Beacon Center, and so we have a host of resources across. Many people would say we're located on the west side, and we serve just persons on the west side. But I just wanted to bring this snapshot to, to tell you that people come from the east side, and the north side, the west side, the south side, uh, to be serviced by the Beacon Center. We are not just a west-side organization, we are not just a Ridgecrest organization. I love the Ridgecrest, and I tell you, there are great things that happen in the Crest. But we have a pleasure to serve over nineteen thousand households across the river region. And if you've seen the census report, you know nineteen thousand people don't live in Ridgecrest, and nineteen thousand people clearly don't live on the west side. If case, they wouldn't have had to redistrict any lines. And so we have individuals who are coming from all over the city, the county, to be serviced at the Beacon Center. And, you know, some people were saying, "Well, Richard Pastor, people aren't really coming from the east side or the north side to come over for counseling services." We found out they are. We did exit interviews, and we found that individuals were dealing with shame. When there was trouble going on in their homes, they did not want to go down the street. They did not want to expose themselves. So we have individuals from all different races, nationalities. We do not require faith to be imposed on them. We use the model that we are walking alongside of them, just like Jesus did, right? So we do that work to be able to share the faith network. And we've also been recipients of several different grants, as well as HERSA sub-grant recipients, ensuring that we are compliant to all federal standards. You'll see to the handout that you receive, we partnered with the Montgomery County Courthouse, um, and working with Judge McCord and Judge Hardwick. We launched this program called Next Steps a year ago, and we didn't ask for a dollar from anybody. We just started doing the work. And what Next Steps does, it works with those who are in bond reduction and alternate sentencing so that they do not re, uh, uh, work against recidivism of them committing a crime again, and we put those holistic wraparound services around those individuals. And so you'll see in that handout, you'll see some of our successes. We're walking individuals through a six-month program. Uh, we're allowing them access to counseling services, and it's currently doing really great. We're currently in six courtrooms across Montgomery County Courthouse, Judge McCord, Judge Gaines, Judge Higgins, and several other judges, and it's working out very well, and we're very thankful for the work of it. As well as when those individuals have found themselves in trouble, when they get out, we don't need them just sitting at home. That's where you find trouble. And so you can see our, just a snapshot of our time shot. Um, this past May, we celebrated, um, the renovation of the center of the building with opening up a healthcare clinic. Uh, we just don't believe in complaining at Metropolitan, the Beacon Center. We recruited a healthcare network out of Tuscaloosa, Alabama, who is now taking over MAO, which is now five RIs in healthcare services. Right here in Montgomery County, we faced over seven thousand individuals who were gonna lose HIV care. And so we found that was a need, and then we launched a community clinic right at the Beacon Center. And, um, you could just see our annual budget, we're eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year. Uh, dollars are placed all over. We have individuals who are working in workforce development, and you'll see that star next to Next Steps. What our hope is, is that this commission, uh, would, would thank in their heart that they would make their first, uh, their first, uh, contribution, uh, to our work. Uh, we understand that there are so many asks that you guys receive year after year after year. But what we do believe is that this Next Steps program is working, is making the difference. I have the pleasure of presenting this program that's in our city at Yale Law School, um, with the DOJ, and we believe future funding is on the way. We've received several grants, and so we're asking that this commission would support us on this day, not that we would come back again for this program to be supported again, but that you would allow us to show that there is support from the Montgomery community. It's something to be flown out to Yale Law for other programs like this to be replicated across this nation because they're seeing the difference. There's our information. Uh, I'm open to questions, and I know, uh, that time is short, and I just want to thank you for just listening, uh, for these few moments.
Yeah, I came to your, uh, grand opening.
Yes, sir.
I was fortunate, I was out of the country on the second one. Vice Chair Sankey was at the second one, I think, one of them.
That's right.
I did a tour myself. I spent personal time with, um, Pastor Williams, and I have my hat off to you for what you're doing. You're doing an amazing job right there in the community. Um, every one of us need to do a tour, because it is simply amazing what he is doing right there in the community. And, and I applaud him for this being his first time coming to the county, because, you know, I am a stickler about the fact that we got so many keep coming to the county like a revolving door. And, um, the point in life is that we, you, we're here to assist you, but eventually, you gotta find your way, you know, after year after year. So I applaud you for never coming and doing it on your own. And I ask that, you know, we sit down together as a commission and see how can we support him, because it doesn't, it affects all of Montgomery County, not just one side. It affects all of Montgomery County what he's doing.
Do you have a specific request, Pastor?
Yes, sir, uh, we would like for that Next Steps program for twenty thousand dollars to support the work. Um, we would like to expand to every courtroom, uh, that is in the Montgomery County Courthouse. We feel that we're doing a disservice, uh, to our neighbors because we're only servicing six courtrooms. And as you know, in Montgomery County, there are more, uh, than six courtrooms. And we believe, um, with your investment, as well as several other proposals that we placed out there, that we can be in every single courtroom, so that when individuals are being, um, placed before the judicial system, they can have access to counseling and social work, and we can do some real work around recidivism, um, in our city.
Any other questions? Thank you, Richard.
Hey, thank you so much, Commissioner.
I think that's all, Florence, is that?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna take about a three or four-minute recess. We'll be back about ten oh three.